Welcome everyone to our July School Committee meeting and we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank everyone for joining us and let me just introduce the school committee. To my left, we have Mr. Jason Hammond and Mr. Kevin Marreira. And to my right, we have Mr. Tony Gelfey, Mrs. Rachel King, Mrs. Lillian Holbrook, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Mike Dolan, Superintendent Swenson, and my name is Susan Free Windowski. And we'll start on our agenda with the approval of minutes for June 12th, 2019. Motion by?
So voted.
Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Dolan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Excellent. And we will move on to our educational reports, Driven to Distraction presentation. Mrs. Beach.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm Yolanda Beach, one of the Assistant Principals at the high school. And also here with me this evening is Peter Spagon, who is from East Bridgewater Insurance Agency. So he will also talk to you as well. Madam Chairwoman, School Committee, Superintendent Swenson, Assistant Superintendent Powers, thank you all so much for giving us the opportunity to talk about Distractology. So, Distractology is a very interesting program that's been to the high school before, back in March of 2017. And we have the fortunate opportunity that they're returning to BREA the second week of September. What is Distractology? So it is a 36-foot mobile classroom that Arbella Mutual Foundation brings here on campus at the high school. And it's with us for a full week. And our students, our young drivers who have either a learner's permit or a driver's license for less than three years, those students are able to sign up to participate. And they're participating in these simulations because it's all about training our young people about the hazards of distracted driving. So distracted driving, making phone calls, sending text messages, checking social media, checking the radio, you know, drinking something, spilling something, all of those things that lead to many accidents. And particularly with our young drivers, we find that 60% of teenagers who get into accidents, it is due to distracted driving. So we're really excited that we're able to work with Arbella in order to bring the program back to the high school again. The way that it's set up is that when the mobile classroom comes on campus, students will have already signed up to participate. They can take two students at a time. They enter the mobile unit, state-of-the-art technology with all sorts of simulations, videos, to really give them that effect of the kinds of things that could happen, how to avoid hazards, how to avoid accidents, and the potential dangers. So they're in there for about 40 to 45 minutes. And afterwards, they will receive a gas card, $15. And on the back of it, there'll be a code, because there are two parts to the training. One part is to, you know, enter the mobile unit, participate in this simulation. But then the second part is that follow-up, you know, that once they've left, that we want them to then go online and to do a 20-minute sort of refresher, which really helps that training sink in deeper so that they really get it and can refresh the things that they've learned. We have it set up so that we are informing parents about what we're doing. We've already reached out to the Rainham Police Chief, as well as the Bridgewater Police Chief, so they are aware of what we'll be doing. And again, this is their second time coming. And there's often a waiting period of a year to two years, as I was talking to Mr. Spagon, where schools are ready to sign up, but they have to wait until there's an opening. They've so far been to more than 160 schools since they started in 2010. And the way Distractology started was that Arbella was noticing back in 2007, 2008 that there was such an increase in accidents, minor and major, due to distracted driving. And so as they reviewed the statistics and saw the impact on our teenagers, and they also heard about some research that was being done at UMass Amherst with a Dr. Fisher on distracted driving. And so Arbella teamed up with UMass Amherst in order to create this Distractology program that started in 2010, and again, has been to more than 160 schools. What they're finding in terms of impact, you know, looking at the data, is that for the students who participate in this program, they're 19% less likely to get into a minor or major accident. And they're 25% less likely to receive a moving violation. So there are these pluses that they're finding that are coming out of those who participate in it, so that they're even mindful of their safety and what could happen. There are approximately 90 students who would get to participate during that course of the week. Because during that second week of school, when they're coming to the high school, Monday, September 9th through Friday, September 13th, the first session starts at 7:40 a.m. with those two students. And then the last session ends at about 3:30 p.m. And Arbella's been great about already setting up the schedule so that we're ready. They looked at Arbella's schedule and they designed time slots that would fit within Arbella's schedule. So of course, our teachers will know in advance, students who are participating in the program. And again, I can't tell you enough, we're really excited. I know some of the other schools where it's been, and there's always been such a positive review, even when they were here with us in March of 2017. And now, Mr. Spagon, come on over. And so he'd like to tell you about some of the new laws and the impact as well, because during that week, he will be here and he will be in the mobile classroom. And in terms of queries, all of him, as well as his staff, they've already submitted their documentation to be queried. And again, I can't tell you how excited we are about the program. And now, Mr. Spagon.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for inviting us down to talk a little bit about Distractology and also about the insurance agency and some of the things that we're doing regarding distracted driving. I will say this, that was probably the best presentation I've ever heard. And I've been doing this for almost 10 years now. So I'm gonna have to take you along on my next journey. But everything that Lana said is exactly right. Arbella's been very active over the course of almost 10 years. And even prior to that, in finding ways to not only help younger drivers, but also adults as well. We sat with them back in about 2007, 2008 as an agency to find ways that we could help with something we saw was going to be a major problem, especially with the texting and driving, obviously. When we did that, the first thing that we did is we started to advocate towards new laws. And one of the people that I reached out to was actually your State Rep, Angela Demile. He talked to me. I've been friends with Angela for many years. I gave him a call and, you know, he helped in a lot of the areas that we needed to when we first started this process and helped Arbella as well in the program way back in the beginning. Since then, and within the last few months, the Hands-Free bill has now come out. The House has passed it, and I just heard the Senate passed it maybe about a month ago. So that will be the next step in the state's approach at trying to get these devices out of the hands of adults and children, I shouldn't say, young adults, I should say, that are driving, to eliminate some of the accidents and some of the fatalities that are going on. To date, I looked at a statistics today, it said over 40,000 people had died from distracted driving in the course of just last year. And that's at national level. But, you know, something needs to be done. Arbella's done a great job in the Distractology program. We've been a sponsor of the program twice in East Bridgewater, twice in West Bridgewater, and this will be our second time here in Bridgewater-Rainham. We are 100% behind it. I will say, we're also working with one of our Carriage Travelers, who is very hands-on as far as trying to get their message out about distracted driving. And they're gonna be working on a potential pledge program that will be directed to students here in the near future. So hopefully you'll see me back here to talk about that program and to try to, again, just pump into the idea to the kids, just get the feeling and hopefully the sense that, you know, driving and doing anything other than paying attention to the road is not gonna be allowed in the state of Massachusetts. So on my behalf, I would like, again, thank you for letting us come down. Angela Demile, the State Rep, also wanted to say thank you, wanted to be here tonight. He had another obligation. But he's also very happy and very motivated to work with us on anything we can do to help try to figure out a way to at least lessen the problem that we have here in the state of Massachusetts. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Swenson, do you have any comments?
Just, I wanted to thank Arbella, and I wanted to thank Mrs. Beach, who has taken over this for Mr. Sylvia. Now, Mrs. Sylvia was kind of ahead of this initiative. For those who may not know, Mr. Sylvia did leave us, unfortunately, this summer to take a job as the Principal of East Bridgewater High School. So we wish him the best. But he did a wonderful job back in 2017. I know Mrs. Beach, along with Mr. Spagon and the folks from Arbella are gonna do a wonderful job. And we are so appreciative of you bringing this in for our young drivers. Most of us sitting here are parents ourselves, soon-to-be parents of people who will be behind wheels. So we do appreciate this, not only from an educational standpoint, but from a parental and citizen standpoint as well.
I should have mentioned that. That's funny. Funny little quick story there. So, Mr. Sylvia, I was working with him for a couple of weeks. And my sister Gina Williams, who's the Assistant Superintendent, so a big connection there in East Bridgewater.
She's the one who poached him. Thank you.
Yes. That's why I didn't say anything at the beginning. I didn't want to have something thrown at me. But anyways, I had been at lunch with her and she mentioned that they had hired a new principal. And I said, "Oh yeah, who's that?" "Jeff Sylvia." And I said, "Wait a second, I'm working with him." It actually worked out great that we got Yolanda too. But yeah, we're very happy to have him. And we're sorry, but we're extremely happy.
Gina's wonderful.
Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. We're going to-
Motion to approve.
Oh, we have to approve this?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Driven to Distraction pres- well, not the presentation. What are we approving?
Program.
The program.
Distractology.
Distractology program. Motion by Mrs. Holbrook.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marreira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. All right. Now we will move on to Administrative and School Committee reports. And we're gonna start with our Personnel Update, Mrs. Gormly.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Committee, and Superintendent Swenson. We've been very busy in Central Office. We're still not fully staffed yet, but we're working on it. So at the high school, oh, she left. Yolanda Beach has officially been appointed Assistant Principal effective July 1. Dr. James Demers, Assistant Principal effective July 11. And Laura S- everybody else will be effective at the start of the school year. Lauren Serez, School Adjustment Counselor. At Bridgewater Middle School, Stephanie Hastrup, School Psychologist. And Sandy Brown, Health Teacher. At the Williams Intermediate School, Jessica Looney, ELA Teacher. Elizabeth Owens, Special Education. Allison Lemoine, School Adjustment Counselor. At the Mitchell Elementary School, Virginia Latender, Special Education Teacher. Megan Strong, Grade 1 Teacher. Caroline Lemay, Grade 2 Teacher. Emily Fratalia, Grade 3 Teacher. And Alicia Eli, Grade 3 Teacher. At the Merrill, Craig Pulis, Assistant Principal. Matthew Lewis, Physical Education. And Shannon Lazarevic, School Adjustment Counselor, shared between Merrill and La Liberty. The Superintendents also received the following resignations. Jeffrey Sylvia, which I already knew about too, Assistant Principal at the high school effective June 30. Catherine Ferraro, ELA Teacher at Rainham Middle School effective July 11, 2019. And Carolyn Huber, School Psychologist at Bridgewater Middle School effective June 17. I also wanted to recognize the following employees as having perfect attendance for the 2018-19 school year. David Audette, Katrina Lampros, Sharon Davis, James Fryermuth, Dean Guasconi, Virginia Jerome, Shawna Shabot, Sandra Teseika, Rene Latarante, Kathy Russo, Erin Yanoni, who is an Ed Support Professional, David Buely, our base program, and Christine Bouchelle. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I'd just like to commend all those individuals on their perfect attendance.
That's great.
It's a difficult business we're in with little bodies, with little germs. Sometimes it's very difficult to put together that 180 days. So very proud of those individuals who were able to get that outstanding accomplishment. I'm glad we were able to recognize them this evening.
Very nice. All right. We are gonna move on to our Superintendent Evaluation. And the summary report will be presented tonight, July 24. And the evaluation form that we use is a template provided by the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. And the School Committee voted and approved four separate goals for the year October 2018 to July 2019 that were recommended to us by our Long Range Planning Committee. The Superintendent provided evidence of progress toward these goals in his end-of-cycle summative report. The first portion of the evaluation required each committee member, based on review of this evidence and personal observation, to rate progress towards each goal as follows. Did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded. All of the evidence towards those goals was available in the Google Drive. And a copy of that evidence will be included with this report for recording purposes. I'm not gonna go over all of that, because we, all the members had an opportunity to read all that. Our first goal was related to student improvement. And that was to ensure the planning of professional development to improve educational services of the students in the district. Mr. Swenson had scores of 1 exceeded, 5 votes for met, and 2 votes for significant progress. The second goal related to professional practices. The Superintendent, through regular contact with key constituents, will establish a supportive, positive district climate and culture. The votes were 6 met and 2 voted for significant progress. The third and fourth goals were related to district improvement. The third was to create a plan which envisions the future, analyze district performances, educator evaluation and community feedback data for trends and patterns, and then backwards design the improvement strategy from specific desired student outcomes, as well as researching effective practices. Align systems to connect educator evaluation goals and school improvement plans to the district plan and build leverage budget grants and resources in support of the district plan and community commitment to the district plan. And I briefly summed that up as the pillars.
There you go.
All right. And the fourth goal was district improvement as well. And that was to continue to improve site-based safety and security measures throughout the district. And when you combine the two scores, we had 5 met and 3 significant progress. The second portion of the Superintendent Evaluation asks the members to assess performance on standards also developed by the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. This is designed so that all superintendents across the state will be judged by the same standard. Scoring was in four categories: unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And please note that proficient is considered to be fully satisfactory. It is defined as the rigorous expected level of performance. Exemplary is defined as practice that significantly exceeds proficient and can serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide. In the standard 1, which was instructional leadership, Mr. Swenson received 8 proficient. In the standard 2, management and operations, Mr. Swenson received 8 proficient. In the standard 3, family and community service, there were 5 proficient and 3 exemplary. Standard 4 is professional culture, 7 proficient and 1 exemplary, for an overall summative performance of 8 proficient. And finally, we rated the impact on student learning, and the choices were low, moderate, and high. And Mr. Swenson received 5 high-impact and 3 moderate. And then there was an opportunity for members to write comments. If you did score a needs improvement or exemplary, you were asked to provide comments. And what I did was I took a summary so that if 10 people said basi- well, not 10. If 8 people said basically the same thing, I only recorded that once. All right. And 8 members did participate. Mrs. Copares did the review, because she was on the committee the longest. And then Mr. Florence did not complete the review. So as the comments, these are again, all the different members writing the comments. It might say "I" or "we," and then that, I'm just reading that. The Superintendent spoke passionately many times of the need for additional social-emotional supports. He proposed a budget that supported these additions and followed through with the allocation of funds. The Superintendent's efforts in communicating with stakeholders is laudable, especially concerning the Mitchell School building process. Communication by the Superintendent is outstanding with staff and peers. This allows for the interpersonal skills and quicker conflict resolution when needed. Mr. Swenson was an advocate for Bridgewater-Rainham and worked hard through the budget process to bring the system the funds it needed to operate during fiscal year 20. While some social-emotional training for all the faculty and staff is provided, I feel more training needs to be put in place. I believe the implementation of the EXCEL, the E-X-S-E-L initiative, is a good starting point. I want to be sure that what is presented to the School Committee is actually being followed through at the building level. Mr. Swenson continues to be a constant presence in our schools throughout the district. His visibility in the district has given him the opportunity to build stronger relationships with the administration, faculty, and staff. It is my hope that with the hiring of the Curriculum Coordinator, the district can continue to move forward the business of educating our children. The curriculum is the foundation in which all else in the district sits upon, and this needs to be held to a high standard. I would like to see Mr. Swenson continue to develop his relationship with the BREA and union leadership. Mr. Swenson is very passionate as a Superintendent for Bridgewater-Rainham, but an occasion to his own detriment. At times with union leadership, as well as community officials, he becomes defensive or takes a defensive posture when challenged, compromising his ability to find common ground. Mr. Swenson's community outreach with regards to the Mitchell School Building Project has been outstanding. The documentation that he and his team provided to the MSBA was integral to the approval of the schematic design phase of the project. I would like to encourage Mr. Swenson to attend any MASs, Mass Association of School Superintendents events. This would be a great networking opportunity. Mr. Swenson was also praised by several members for his decreased use of social media. I feel that the exceptional time spent on the school building project did not allow Mr. Swenson to attend other local events, for example, the Senator Pacico event at the college. I feel and have felt since day one that Mr. Swenson's only goal has been to ensure the district's success in every aspect of education. His rapport with the teachers and students is like nothing I have seen before. Derek expects such high standards of himself that it has an impact on student learning, because the teachers and administration see the work that he puts in and understands what is expected of them. And finally, Mr. Swenson is supportive of our students and the work they do in and out of the classrooms, as can be evidenced by his regular and enthusiastic attendance at after-school activities, performances, and other celebratory events, classroom visits, as well as town department meetings. He seems to truly enjoy that aspect of his work, and his visible presence is important to students and their families and to the faculty and staff. The pride Mr. Swenson has in the students who attend our schools is evident in every report that he does on the student activities and accomplishments during our School Committee meetings. I want to thank everyone for the evaluation. I think it was a very wonderful evaluation. And we will be moving forward to create new goals for the 2000-year, 2019, 2020. And we hope to approve these new goals at our September meeting. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the committee. I know evaluating myself, how difficult it can be. So we appreciate all your time and efforts. And I appreciate the wonderful team I have that surrounds me each and every day, with our teachers, administrators, support staff, Central Office staff, ESPs, everyone who plays a role in what we do each and every day. And I couldn't do my job without you people doing your job effectively each and every day. So I appreciate all of you and all of the members of our committee for your endless time that you give each year, volunteering your time to help move this district forward. So thank you all.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to the Budget Subcommittee Report, and that is Mr. Gelfey.
Okay. The Budget Subcommittee held a meeting on July 16th, 2019, in the Superintendent's Conference Room located at 166 Mountain Prospect Street at 6:30 p.m. The HVAC, the new director of facilities, Mr. Pacico officially began his tenure on July 1st, 2019. Mr. Pacico performed a functional assessment of all systems. He identified immediate needs in the areas of preventative maintenance and HVAC concerns at the high school. With a maintenance schedule, he hopes to prevent catastrophic boiler failures. He requested approval to enter into a contract with Dakin Repairs totaling $60,679. On behalf of the Budget Subcommittee, I move to approve the allocation of $60,679 to enter into a contract with Dakin for HVAC repairs at the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School.
Motion by Mr. Gelfey, second by Mr. Dolan. Mr. Swenson, do you have any comments?
Just, first of all, want to commend Mr. Pacico for hitting the ground running. He actually did a little bit of a transition time in the month of June. And I appreciate that he gave up his time to work with Mr. Berenselli towards the end of June. He was able to do a real thorough assessment of all the mechanicals throughout the district. And looking at what we've done last year in terms of our efficiencies of that system at the high school, now we really want to put into place some correction of some of the mechanicals that need to be repaired. But more importantly, have a real proactive approach, which I appreciate. Mr. Pacico has that lens of putting that together, those preventative maintenance plans so that we can prevent some of those break-fix issues that we've had to encounter in the course of the last few years, and hopefully increase the life expectancy of our mechanical systems throughout the district. So thank you, Mr. Pacico, and it does come with my recommendation.
And this money has already been in the budget where we set aside money for certain things that come up?
Each year, we put together, you know, we, again, estimate, and try to be as fiscally responsible as possible in terms of what we estimate based upon trends from previous years, and put a certain amount of money that we allocate for maintenance and repair. So this is within Mr. Pacico's part of the operational budget. But we want to be able to use those funds directly for those HVAC issues throughout the course of the year.
All right. So motions are made, and second, does anyone else have any questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Mr. Gelfey.
Okay. The Mitchell gym floor sustained damage when a vent unit leaked. The total project cost came in at approximately $25,000, including the asbestos mitigation. Mr. Pacico was able to negotiate the price down to $181,327 and received pricing for new bleachers, new wall padding, and refinishing the floor. The district collected $177,831 in insurance reimbursement, creating a shortfall of $3,495. With the recommendation of the Budget Subcommittee, I move to approve $3,495 to complete the gym floor project at the Mitchell at the middle.
Motion by Mr. Gelfey, second by Mrs. Holbrook. Mr. Swenson?
Yes. Again, kudos to Mr. Pacico. We get that original number, it was a little bit high. It did incorporate that price for the wall padding and the bleachers, which we did need to repair and was part of our capital improvement plan down the line. So we're able to kinda check that box off of our capital improvement plan. For a much lower price. So an $80,000 project that we're really trying to finish here for $3,000 and change. So I think it's definitely, that definitely comes with my recommendation moving forward.
All right. Motion has been made, and second, any questions from the committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
And a request for reimbursement of the $3,495 will be sent to the town of Bridgewater.
Very good.
End of year, during the in-house auditing process, overall changes have been made to the state function categories for the fiscal year 2018-2019. A budget is an estimated fiscal financial plan and is prepared a year in advance. Once implemented, changes to the budget line accounts may occur based on the changing needs of the district. So the motion to authorize the following FY '19 transfers between state function categories. FY '19 transfers between function codes, 1,000 series administration decrease of $207,698. 2,000 series instructional services decrease of $526,762.93. 2,000 series instructional services decrease of $526,762.93. 3,000 series other student services increase of $549,838.76. 4,000 series operations and maintenance increase of $270,817. 5,000 series fixed costs decrease of $831,380. And 9,000 series programs with other schools increase of $745,202. So, the motion to authorize a FY20 payroll carryover amount of, let's see, is that this? $105,005.51 into the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mr. Dolan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
And to author another motion to authorize $1,144,910.84, which represents the FY19 vendor purchase order carryover into the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mr. Dolan. Mrs. Macedo, would you want to just give a very brief explanation of that, just so in case everyone doesn't?
What we'll need to do is that we will need to, also we'll need to increase the increase in transfers and do that for the auditors, but the incumbents' carryovers, the incumbents' carryovers are bills that have not been paid but were initiated in 2019, and we're waiting for invoices to come in. So, because on June 30th, the budget goes away, we have to then approve a small budget to bring over those things so that we can do them during the next fiscal year. So, motion, so there are two separate motions. Did you do the first one correctly? I don't know if you approved the transfers. We did it. All right, I wanted to make sure.
So, motion is made, and seconded for the vendor purchase order carryovers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. All right.
And the budget subcommittee decided to attend a joint budget meeting with the town of Bridgewater scheduled for Tuesday, July 30th. And last but not least, a traffic study was conducted at the Merrill and Law Liberty Elementary Schools. The study created conceptual plan designed to alleviate traffic congestion caused by student drop-off and pickup. However, due to the cost, it was decided the district will review ways to stagger dismissal to ease some of the traffic congestion during arrival and dismissal of students. The end.
Thank you, Mr. Gelfe, for that report. Does anybody have any questions regarding the traffic study? Did you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so we've worked with Brian, it's actually the other traffic consultant on the Mitchell Elementary School project, and they did look at, there is a T-ball field that is between both the Merrill and the Law Liberty campus. And we've looked at, possibly, we've talked to folks from Park and Rec because it really does fall under, that land falls under Park and Recreation even though it's on the school lot. We have worked with Tim McCray from Park and Rec. We've discussed possibly relocating that field somewhere else on the fields behind the Merrill and Law Liberty. We did look at some of the conceptual designs that they had presented us. They look like they could possibly alleviate some of our traffic concerns. Definitely is a concern coming into this fall. It's just right now, the price to do projects such as this could range anywhere from $150 to $300,000. So, it's something that I think we need to investigate a little bit more. I think we need to definitely reach out, which I plan on doing, to the folks in the town of Rainham to see if this is something that they want to move forward with. I believe we have about six conceptual ideas with different traffic flow patterns in that space, or possibly utilizing that just as a parking area either for staff or for our parents. So, I think it's something we should definitely continue to explore. I just feel like right now, with what we're kind of given in terms of an estimate for the cost of the project, it might be, it may not be as feasible right now at this time. So, I do have a meeting on Friday morning with a gentleman from the Rainham Baseball League who was part of the initial conversations with Mr. McCray about possibly relocating that field. He does have some ideas about possible ideas about maybe someone in town maybe donating some of their time to do a project like that. We do have to be concerned with procurement when we do these types of projects and kind of go through our state bid list and make sure that our procurement process is being followed. So, we're still putting the feelers out there. I definitely do want to do something with that space eventually, but want to make sure that we do it and we do it correctly, but also that we're being fiscally responsible when we do it to the towns of Rainham, to the town of Rainham and, you know, the district as a whole. So, to be continued. But we do have those conceptual ideas, and I think some of them could really, really, truly help us in terms of alleviating some of that traffic, not only at Merrill but at Law Liberty in the afternoon and morning.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so we are going to move on to the Director of Business Services report, Mrs. Macedo. And just so that everyone is aware, at every monthly budget meeting, Mrs. Macedo gives a report to the members of the budget subcommittee, and quarterly, we ask Mrs. Macedo and Mr. Conley to give a report to the full committee just so that everybody can stay on topic. Very good, thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Swenson. I'm just going to wrap up a little bit about fiscal year 19. As you saw, we have some carryovers for both our vendor and payroll account, which you've just approved, which is great. We can paying those out as we speak. We entered the fiscal year in the black, as I had said we probably would. And we were still able to do some pre-purchasing of our out-of-district tuitions, which will help the 2020 budget, and we were also able to do about $250,000 purchasing some supplies that we desperately need in the schools, so we did that as well. We've made all of the transfers. As you can see, when we look at the transfers, where money was coming from and going to, obviously, we were always watching the transportation account, special ed transportation. We've had much more students being transported and obviously the cost of that. And also in our operations, we did a lot of work in the buildings this past year, so a lot of those funds went to those areas. In the areas of the programs with other schools, the 9,000s, a lot of that increase came from our charter and school choice sending. They had, give us an estimate along with the cherry sheet and the year before, and as things come in and move around, then we have more costs, so we had to cover those as well. And some of it was due to some of the special ed tuitions as well. So, overall, it was, it came out okay, it was a good year. This year, fiscal year 2020, is off. We've got everything set up in the budget. Folks are able to go in and start putting in their incumbences. We don't have a freeze at this time, so they're able to make their purchases, and we're doing that. They're doing it all very nicely. Still asking me, do I have money for this? Do I have money for that? So, they're getting into using their budgets and getting things for the new coming year, so we're excited about that. During this time of year, what we're doing is kind of, we're still stepping in fiscal year 19 while we're trying to work in 20, and we're closing up all of the accounts, going through them, doing internal audits, getting ready to prepare the end-of-year report for the state, and then eventually getting ready for the audit from our outside agency. So, overall, that's what's been going on, and just wanted to let you know that everything's moving along smoothly.
Very good. Did anybody have any questions? Mr. Dolan?
Just to make sure that we're going to be freezing the budget again in October, as has been practiced.
Yes, October 1st.
We usually do. That's a good practice. It's served us well over the years.
Yes, it has.
I do have a question, Mrs. Macedo.
Sure, Mr. Marrera.
Was there an increase of out-of-school place, school choice from the previous fiscal year?
I believe the numbers, you may have the numbers there, the amounts of money have increased, so I'm assuming that also is the number of students also.
Now, is that across all grades, K through, 1 through 12?
Yes, because other school districts may accept students K through 12. We only accept students receiving 9 through 12.
Okay.
So, that's our way of trying to help mitigate some of that extra cost by bringing kids in ourselves, but more go out than we are able to bring in as classes.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Macedo?
Just say to Ms. Macedo, we'll be freezing the budget in October, but in October, we'll also be starting FY21. So, no sooner into FY20, we start FY21. And I just want to commend Ms. Macedo because when you're putting it together, a budget, you're trying to estimate things 12 months away, and sometimes it's difficult to do. And I will say, knock on wood, that since I've been in the district, Ms. Macedo's done an unbelievable job of keeping us in the black and keeping me out of jail. So, I appreciate that so much. But, no, but I know how difficult of a job it is to do, to estimate that, and to be coming into where we were, very close, about a half a million bucks away from what our guesstimated number is, I think is outstanding. So, I thank you for always giving me that hairy eyeball at management every Monday and telling me I can't purchase things and keeping us in the black. We truly appreciate it and the job that you do, Kathy.
Thank you, and I will continue to do so.
All right. I've just been handed a little note that we may not have done the carryovers quite right. So, we did vote for the transfers between the function codes, and those were all the numbers that Mr. Gelfe read. We then needed actually a separate motion to do the payroll carryovers, and that was the 105,005.51.
Right, but he didn't get to finish his, they were individual motions.
So, does he need to read this paper here?
So, there are three separate motions.
So, the motion to authorize the FY20 payroll carryover amount of $105,005.51 into the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Right, just has to be three, and he didn't get that far because we started asking questions, so he wasn't able to finish his motion.
All right, so motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And then you, we did not do the vendor purchase carry order?
No, because we asked a question in the middle, it ended up all kind of lumped together when he was, he was listing them out as separate motions.
And Mrs. McDougal keeps us out of jail, so we appreciate that too. So, Tony, could you read the final?
Motion to authorize $1,144,910.84, which represents the FY19 vendor purchase order carryover into the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Motion by Mr. Gelfe, second by Mr. Dolan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. So, we're good on the budget? Woo-hoo! Okay, thank you very much. All right, and we are going to move on now to Mr. Conley's Treasury report.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. I presented to the subcommittee the other night my revenue report to end out the year and make sure that everybody had it. Just commenting on some of the things that were said about the budget, and we certainly do, and Ms. Macedo leads me in that conservative estimates. Some of the estimates are known, some of them are not. The debt assessments are known because we've sent that to, send that to the towns. We work strongly with the government's budget, and what you see from me is what we ended up for the end of the year. Transportation fees were a little bit off. Chapter 71 was over. 70, chapter 70 was over. The high school athletics were down, and that's a tough thing to predict. Interest was up. Miscellaneous revenue was down a bit. Medicaid revenue again is up. Again, we do an estimate and try and figure out. Parking revenue was up, lost books. We made a lot on lost books. Oh, no, $63. Rent those school facilities, again, based on estimates, and I think we've done very, very well. I gave you all the revenue that I get in, and I give you the expenses that I have, and I give you the, there's payroll and taxes, payrolls, insurance, and dues, and then I give you the regular warrants with the total expenses, and then the total income and balance over the year.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Conley? Do we need to make a motion to accept the report, or is this just information? All right, perfect. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
All right. And next, we have a policy subcommittee report, Mrs. Holbrook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy subcommittee met on June 17th, uh, July 17th, sorry. The following members were present, Mrs. King, Mr. Florence, and myself, Mrs. Holbrook. The following committee member was absent, Mr. Marrera. The first item taken up by the committee was policy IJNDD, which is a policy on electronic and social networking websites. This policy does require two readings, tonight being the first reading, and then the second reading will take place at the August 21st meeting. If approved at the August 21st meeting, a reference to this policy will be added to the student and staff handbooks. Mr. Schantz is our expert in this area, so I would like to turn it over to him at this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Swenson, district school committee members. The website and social media policy is nine pages long. I'm going to summarize it, and I'll start now. This document formalizes the policy for the professional and personal use of the websites and social media by Bridgewater- Rainham Regional School District's employees in a responsible manner. All users, including students, teachers, staff, administrators, and organizations, are covered by this policy and are expected to be familiar with its provisions. For the purpose of this policy, official social media is understood to be content created by individuals or groups representing Bridgewater- Rainham Regional School District using accessible, expandable, and upgradable publishing technology, thorough, and on the internet. Examples of official social media include, but are not limited to, district, school, club, team, PTO, or class websites, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Google Plus, blogs, YouTube channels, LinkedIn, Snapchat, Nextdoor, and Flickr, and many more. For the purpose of this policy, personal social media is understood to be content created by individuals for non-work-related activities. District employees should not use personal social media sites to communicate with students. Official BRRSD social media sites will be used solely for communicating information about the schools, including projects, events, and services. Official social media sites for classes, other student groups, clubs, and athletic teams shall be administered and monitored by principals or their designees. The athletic director, coaches, club advisors, and their site administrators approved by the principal, superintendent, or designee. Usernames for these accounts shall be created using official school email addresses and shall be maintained through the technology department. It is the responsibility of educators who are using official BRRSD social media tools with students to teach students about safe and responsible use of social media. with students to teach students about safe and responsible use of social media. Staff members will treat professional student media space and communication like a classroom or professional workspace. Whenever possible, when establishing professional social media sites, users will consider the intended audience for the site and consider the level of privacy assigned to the profile. The profile will be set to private to limit public access. Staff will obtain their supervisor's approval using the BRRSD social media registration form prior to, prior to setting up a professional social media presence. The form can be downloaded from the district's website. All social media sites are subject to Massachusetts Public Records and Record Retention Laws, rules, regulations, and policies. Except for inappropriate postings, staff shall not delete any message posted on social media site, web page, blog, homework page, et cetera. In case of inappropriate postings, the posting shall be, shall be screenshot and sent to an administrator using your district email account. The posting is then to be deleted from the site. Staff shall save all direct messages and communications conveyed through district-affiliated social media sites. All emails sent or received by district email accounts is archived for a minimum of seven years. Any posted content on official BRRSD social media sites, including articles, pictures, photographs, likeliness, and images cannot, under any circumstances, identify children under the age of 18 by full name. Individuals who do not wish to be depicted in images must return the form, which expressly prohibits the Bridgewater-Rehnham Regional Schools from using such image and likeliness online. The following additional guidelines apply to posting photos and images of students. Images of individual students should not be posted. Images of groups of students, three or more, are permissible as long as the parents, guardians have approved media release permission to the school. Students depicted in images are not to be identified by name. Violations, failure to observe these guidelines may subject users to termination of access to social media and websites. As recommended practice, employees are encouraged to use appropriate privacy settings to control access to their personal social media sites. In order to maintain a professional and appropriate relationship with students, staff may not communicate with students who are currently enrolled in the district on personal social media sites. It is not recommended that staff members post or take photos of other employees, volunteers, vendors, or contractors on personal social media sites. BRRSD employees should not use the BRRSD logo or make any representations that their personal social media site speak in official BRRSD or school capacity. Students using personal social media should be aware of privacy laws and websites' privacy policies. Students who use personal social media to interact with official BRRSD social media must adhere to all school handbook policies regarding behavior. This policy is in compliance with state and federal telecommunications rules and regulations, including the Children's Internet Protection Act, the Protecting Children in the 21st Century Act Amendment, the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, and the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment. This document is adopted from Braintree Public Schools' policy. Few variations were made, excluding a subsection adopted from the Milton Public Schools. And that concludes the reading of the website and social media policy.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schantz?
Mr. Dolan?
I do, Madam Chair. Just to clarify a few things. So you mentioned Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all of the things that, Dr. Prudendowski looked at me like I had 12 heads when I looked at her. What are you talking about? Can, is the Remind app and ClassDojo still, they're not listed, so I don't know if...
If, if an employee is using that, they should fill out the form.
Okay.
So we're aware of it.
Okay, all right. And then the next question is, just to clarify, PTOs are mentioned in here? We aren't dictating this to PTOs, are we? Or is this employees posting on PTO pages? I just want to make sure I understand when we talk about PTOs. Because PTOs are separate organizations. They all have their own 501(c)(3). So I, I don't know if we can dictate to them.
So, under 2A, we did put in here, that first paragraph, "Social Media Administrator Responsibilities," the last sentence of that. Parent groups should put to their site, "This website media page does not reflect the view or opinion of the BRRSD." Just to show that it is not the school district's official opinion, since it's an outside group.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
Correct, we will ask them to put a disclaimer on their page that they are not officially affiliated with the school district.
Okay. But in paragraph two, under the introduction, we list PTO pages. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it's employees posting on those pages, not dictating to the PTOs. That, that's all I'm looking for, is that clarification. I think that's what that means, but again, just want to clarify that piece. Is that... And we don't need necessarily an answer now, because this is first reading.
First reading, correct.
So just for August, if we could get just clarification on that. And maybe it's simply a quick addition to that that clarifies it a little bit better. And then the only other suggestion or recommendation I have is, once we pass this next month presuming, this needs to be delivered to each employee somehow. This is nine pages of heavy content that we need to ensure that everybody has. This is, as much as I appreciate it being referenced in handbooks, I think every employee should be given this in some way, shape, or form.
I agree, they should be made aware of it.
Hand it to them if needed.
And there will be a sign-off sheet.
Oh, there is, okay.
At the beginning of the school year, so they will have to read it. And it will be on the website, so they'll have to read it, sign it. And that will become part of their yearly routine.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I have a quick question. So it says that this document is adopted from Braintree Public Schools' policy IJNDD. I'm assuming that the baseline of it was from the MASC, probably?
Yes, yes.
So they, okay, I just wanted to be sure that there are, the MASC has sort of reviewed this because they probably, the base of it is probably from their guidelines.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
All right, so again, that was the first reading. So if anyone has any questions that you think of over the next month, you can certainly contact Mrs. Holbrook, and then we will vote on it at our August meeting as the final reading. Very good, all right.
We have a policy sub on August 14th, I believe.
Yes.
All right, very good, so bring all your issues by August 14th.
Okay.
All right, very good.
And I'll finish. The Subcommittee, thank you, Mr. Schantz.
Thank you, Ms. Schantz.
The Subcommittee thoroughly reviewed this policy, had much discussion, and made multiple changes to the policy. In full disclosure, much of the policy was taken with permission from the Braintree Public Schools. Mrs. McDougall did contact Braintree Public Schools to get permission to use their policy. The next policy, JFABD McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Policy. Due to changes in state and federal law and a recent McKinney-Vento audit, the new retired homeless, the now-retired homeless liaison, Mrs. Mary Bogel, was required to make mandated changes to several policies. So I would like to make a motion to approve the changes to JFABD McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Policy as mandated by state and federal law.
Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So voted.
The next two policies were just a matter of housekeeping. Policy JE-R, Regulation of School Attendance. In the second to last paragraph, the last sentence, the word "chins," "child in need of services," was changed to CRA, Child Requiring Assistance. So it will now read, "The superintendent or designee may file a CRA, Child Requiring Assistance, petition with the juvenile court." Motion to approve housekeeping changes to JE-R by changing the word "chins" to CRA. So it will now read, "The superintendent or designee may file a CRA, Child Requiring Assistance, petition with the juvenile court."
Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs. King. Any question, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Okay, policy JFAA, Residency of Students. In the second paragraph, the first sentence, the word dismissal was changed to withdrawal. So it will now read, "A determination that a student is ineligible to attend BRRSD due to a failure to reside in the towns of Bridgewater or Rehnham shall result in the withdrawal from the district." I would like to make a motion to approve housekeeping changes to policy JFAA by changing the word dismissal to withdrawal. So it will now read, "A determination that a student is ineligible to attend BRRSD due to a failure to reside in the towns of Bridgewater or Rehnham shall result in the withdrawal from the district."
Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs. King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Wonderful, very good. All right, moving on. Policy is always exciting. All right, Necessary Evil. Now we have a transportation update. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appeal hearings were held on Thursday, July 18th, 2019. The Appeal Review Board included Superintendent Swenson and Mr. Rich Florence, a representative from Lucini Bus Lines, and Transportation Administrative Assistant Ellen George also attended the appeal hearings. Approximately 10 appeals were submitted for review. Of that number, seven appeals were heard by the Appeals Board. Parents will receive a decision on their appeal via a determination letter to be mailed later than Monday, July 29th, 2019.
Very good, excellent. Any comments, Mr. Swenson?
Yes, first of all, thank you to Mr. Florence and Mrs. George and representatives from Lucini Bus Lines, which were Gail Howard and Will Lucini. I just want to say thank you to Mrs. George, because in years past, we, we literally had close to 80 appeals come our way. For her to work the way she worked with parents and families leading up to the appeals process and getting that down to 10, I, I can't say enough about the job that she's done in this role, as well as other facets of the role that she's done a very, very great job with. So kudos to Mrs. George for that, and thank you to the parents that did come in. Again, we get it, you're advocating for your child's safety, and we do take that into consideration. But even leading up to the appeals, those bus routes have been vetted out through the bus drivers, through safety officials. And over the course of the last few years, we've really stated that we want to remain at those group stops. And over time, some of the changes that we've made along the lines have also helped in curbing the amount. But thank you to all involved.
Very good, all right. Next, we have our facilities report. Mr. Pacheco.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee. Superintendent Swenson? So our custodial restoration of buildings has began on the 17th, including deep cleaning of surfaces, stripping wax and floors, office classroom moves, and currently the buildings are about 50%, so right on track. Facilities Maintenance, three-person team, total of 26 in-house projects. One of the larger projects is taking place in this building to install water showers. This will allow us to service and repair the plumbing system without shutting off the entire building water supply. So that's pretty important. Life safety testing, along with police, fire, and building official inspections will be conducted throughout the summer, usually scheduled just before school opens. And just a quick update on the Mitchell gym floor project. We have mitigated the asbestos. The damage section, as a result, has been removed. The section has been replaced. We're about quarter of the way of the square feet.
That's great.
That's anticipated to be completed by the start of school. And then leaders, as soon as we're moving forward on that, we still should be able to meet our date of November, December, but as always, we'll encourage to get that done sooner. So at that, at this point, that concludes the facilities report.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Pacheco?
I do have one question, Madam Chair.
Sure, Mr. Marrera.
Mr. Pacheco, was the asbestos done by an outside vendor, and was it baited?
Yes, absolutely. And we did receive the final air quality report, and everything was well below the maximum standards.
Perfect, thank you.
And what does "baited" mean?
It's saying it was done.
Okay.
A certificate of abatement means that the work was done.
Completed to standard.
Mr. Dolan?
So to be clear, the gym floor will be ready for the opening of school?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. The presumed election we will hold in October, November for the fully new Mitchell School will happen in the gym?
Correct.
Perfect. And then the other thing I wanted to add that we didn't mention on the budget Subcommittee piece was that part of all of that was, the entire floor was being stripped, new lines were being painted. Can you just go into a little bit more on that?
Yes, so pretty much we were going to be patching in the affected area. And it was, the complete floor is going to be resurfaced, sanded down in bearwood. We're going to repaint the lines, including basketball court, badminton, and volleyball. And then the, and painting a border along the perimeter. And final with the sport finish on the floor, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Very good, thank you, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to our Mitchell School MSBA update. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The School Building Committee met on Monday, July 8th, 2019 in the Town Council chambers of the Academy Building in Bridgewater at 6:30 p.m. The purpose of this meeting was to thoroughly examine and vote upon a 132,000-square-foot new construction schematic design and the overall project budget of $80,600,000 for the tentative George Mitchell Elementary School building project. Please note that this project budget does include the amount of $800,000 that was appropriated for the feasibility study. After a comprehensive discussion, the School Building Committee unanimously voted to submit the schematic design and project budget to MSBA on Wednesday, July 10th, 2019, for their approval at their Wednesday, August 28th, 2019, Board Meeting. If the George Mitchell Elementary School schematic design is ratified by MSBA at that August meeting, the Bridgewater Town Council will then vote to have this as a ballot question at a special town election sometime in October or November of 2019. Just a reminder that all School Building Committee meetings are open to the public and that community members are encouraged to attend and provide feedback and input. As always, additional George H. Mitchell Elementary School project and MSBA information updates can be found at www.bridwaterschoolproject.com.
All right, so with that information, I would like to entertain a motion to support the decision of the Mitchell School Building Committee to submit the schematic design and project budget to the MSBA on Wednesday, July 10th, 2019. Motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Holbrook. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I feel like you should get the motion, since you've been to all those meetings. Very good, thank you.
I will be, I will be attending tomorrow. The MSBA has asked that we have a meeting tomorrow just to review some of the spaces within the schematic and some of the ineligible's and try to kind of negotiate some of those and advocate for those spaces to be eligible. So that's a meeting that we will be attending tomorrow at MSBA. So, that's a meeting that we will be attending tomorrow at MSBA, and I can report out at the next meeting about how that meeting goes as well.
Perfect. All right. Very good.
Just wondering, I don't know if you have the answer to this. When do they start thinking about materials to use, you know, specific, like desks, chairs, paper towel dispensers?
Yeah, that'd be construction phase. That's when you really get into the fine pieces of that schematic design and things along those lines. I mean, based into this, this operational project budget, they do have the furniture, an estimate of the furniture, and I believe it's $2,300 per student for furnishings and technology. So, that is incorporated in that $80,600,000 number, but the specifics of what that furniture is going to be and those, that's...
A way.
Yeah, a way, those kind of...
I know in the past, I was at a new school and got stuck with a lot of, let's just say, not top-shelf materials and things, so I want to make sure that we don't pay for this, and then have to pay for fixing things that shouldn't have to be fixed.
Sure, I get you, yeah. No, all of that is kind of incorporated into this budget number, and there's so much oversight now with MSBA, I don't think that they're going to let us bring in subpar furnishings at the end, so, and IT, so...
Yeah, and the committee won't let that happen either.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Swenson? All right. Very good. We're going to move on to new business, and first up is the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School Declaration of Surplus for Outdated Books. Ms. Macedo.
Yes, Ms. Watson sent me an email regarding a number of books that they have that they are no longer using, they're taking up space, and as part of housekeeping and trying to keep the building free of unnecessary things. They've asked that we declare the following books surplus. There's a Sports and Entertainment Marketing Book, which is a 2001, there are about 48 of those workbooks. Introduction to Business, 1997, copyright date, 30 of those. Intro to Business Workbook, 31, another set of 31. And then there's Applied Business Math Workbooks, 1997, there are 33 of those. Mathematics with Business Application, 29 of those, those were 2007 copyright. And finally, the Math Review Workbook, there are 29 of those. And we would dispose of these, either we could find a vendor that may be interested in them, or find another means of disposing.
All right. Very good. So, motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mr. Dolan. Any comments, Mr. Swenson? Would you like the 1997 book?
That would be a nice summary read.
Yeah. No, it comes with my recommendation to declare these outdated resources surplus.
All right. Motion is admitted, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So voted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have the motion to approve the payroll warrants dated June 30th, July 3rd, and July 18th. Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mr. Gelphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So voted. And now, we're going to do approval of the general ledger warrants dated June 30th, 2019, June 3rd, 2019.
July 3rd.
Oh, July, no, June 30th, July 3rd, and July 18th, 2019. Motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Hammond. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So voted. Great. Okay. And now, we are to the gifts and grants. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we have one gift this evening, but it's a very, very generous gift, and it is from the parents group at La Liberty, LPO, and they have gifted $30,632.22 to La Liberty Elementary School for the purchasing of technology equipment.
That's wonderful.
And as I say, all of our parents groups at all of our schools are so generous, and we so appreciate all the efforts they do to help us supplement our operational budget. So, thank you to all of the members of LPO for this incredibly generous gift.
Motion to approve the LPO gift of $30,632.22. Motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Hammond. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the public would like to speak to us? Please come forward. All right, very good. Moving on. Motion to, any comments, any information, any members would like to share with anyone? All right, very good. Oh, Mr. Swenson?
No, no comment, just, I wanted to maybe give a shout-out to some of our kiddos.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
So, we have a couple of groups of students within the district. One group, the Rainham Youth Baseball U-12, they just qualified for the Cal Ripken World Series, so they're heading out to California in a few weeks, so I just wanted to wish them all the best. They're a great group of boys, and we actually have a great group of young ladies who are currently now from Rainham down in Florida, representing our softball program. So, a very exciting summer for all of our kiddos. I wish them the best, safe travels, and...
Experience a lifetime.
Experience a lifetime, and bring home a trophy, no pressure.
All right. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn at 8:13? Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs., Mr. Marrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good, so voted. Thank you.